Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Wednesday, March 16th, 2016 Newmarket Town Council meeting. We begin, as always, with a pledge of allegiance.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
I will accept a motion to seal the non-public minutes of the meeting we just left.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, tie goes to the runner. Have your choice, Bishop. Amy Burns. Uh, discussion. Mr. Administrator of the vote.
Counsel Burns.
Aye.
Counsel Pike.
Aye.
Counsel Thompson.
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein.
Aye.
Counsel Levy.
Aye.
Counsel Nizaro.
Aye.
Motion passes six-zero.
Um, we are going to switch an item on the agenda. Usually, because this is our first meeting, we have the election of officers and adoption of town council rules. But because we do not have a full council seated and Kyle's unable to call in, we are going to move that to the next meeting, if all councilors are good with that.
Mm-hmm.
I swear this is not a power grab.
One thing that the rules changed between last year and this year is that the council as a whole appoints committees. And one thing that we thought was maybe to, there's a list of all the committees. If you're interested, you can forward me your name for a committee and we'll just have that list ready. And if there's more than one, the council will vote it up or down, that way we can have it.
So what are we doing? Do you want to know?
Yeah, email me the list.
So if you want to be on a committee, email it to you.
Yeah. And then I'll disperse it with the council.
And then we vote on it.
Yep, next meeting.
Is it helpful if now we, people told each other that maybe somebody's on a committee and they're planning to say they'd like to go to something else? Is there any, is there, does that help everybody or is it best just to send it to Steve and let it, let it be talked about at the next time?
I'm not really prepared to, like, I haven't locked, so...
Yeah, the problem with that issue is Counsel Bowden isn't here. So he may be interested in something.
He's the new guy. You know where he ends up.
(laughing) I'm his advisor.
Advisory heritage.
I don't have that anymore.
I know. That's why I said it. Um, so I also, I guess, would say that we all should make sure we read the council rules and are willing to talk about it. Like, I remember last meeting, last year, there was a big conversation around editing the council rules. So then hopefully we all come prepared with any edits we want to have a discussion about next year or next week.
The, the rules that are in this packet, though, are there, have, are there any changes from last year?
No.
Okay, I didn't think so.
Any other questions on that?
Just to that point briefly, if there were going to be any changes to that, they would obviously be brought up at the next meeting.
At the next meeting, yeah. Um, so we are going to substitute, however, a dedication of the town report. Uh, so I'd love to ask Madeline St. Hilaire to come up to the podium here.
(inaudible) on camera.
Ready for my close-up, Mr. Mill. Uh, how many people got that one? Um, so I will now read, uh, the town report for everyone that I'm sure has read it, is dedicated to Madeline St. Hilaire and there's a dedication inside of it. Uh, so I'd love to read that dedication now. This 2015 town report is dedicated to Madeline St. Hilaire in recognition of her many years of service and devotion to the town of Newmarket. Madeline has been a resident of Newmarket for most of her life. She and her husband, Donnet, bought their house on, in Maple Crest in 1965, where she resides today. She's a 1958 graduate of Newmarket High School. Madeline worked in the town office from 1979 to 1985 as an accounts payable and payroll clerk. In 1986, she assumed the position of deputy town clerk tax collector, which she held until she retired in May 2001. She came back to the town offices on a part-time basis, filling in to cover employee vacations in various department offices from 2003 to December 2015. With her vast knowledge of town office operations, she could transition from one department to the next seamlessly. She has served the town as supervisor of the checklist from March 2002 to March 2015. Madeline is an active member of the Sunrise Sunset 55 and Over Club and serves as secretary of the senior citizens group. She is an avid dog walker, excuse me, an avid walker and devoted dog lover. She has, not an avid dog walker, hello, you're a dog lover, so you gotta walk some dogs every now and again. Um, she has had the pleasure of raising several Dashins in the past. The latest one, Murphy, unfortunately passed away recently, so she now has a shih-tzu named Sweetie who is her best friend.
Yes, she is.
Madeline is known and admired by many people as a people person. She's always served the public in a friendly and respectful and upbeat manner. She has a quick wit and contagious laugh. Madeline and her late husband, Donnet St. Hilaire, worked tirelessly on behalf of the townspeople to create a very successful Old Home Day weekends held annually in the summer. Madeline has three children, Kim St. Hilaire and her partner Beth Dennis of Newmarket, Kathy St. Hilaire of Newmarket, and Eugene Jean St. Hilaire and his wife Mary of Barrington, New Hampshire. We extend our sincere appreciation to Madeline St. Hilaire for her service to the citizens of Newmarket and wish her years of good health and happiness. Madeline, thank you so much for all the...
(applause) I'm so proud.
Want to help people at home?
Thank everybody. I'm so proud to have this. Thank you.
(applause) They don't have to wait.
You guys don't have to stay for the whole meeting. If you don't want to.
Fascinating debate coming out.
I can't help it, I'm a weeper.
Um, we let the crowd...
Yeah, let this hang in for a little while.
All right. Thank you very much for coming.
(inaudible)
Um, so we will now open the public forum at 7:17. Anyone from the public? We will close the public forum at 7:17. Uh, we'll now have town council to accept the minutes. We'll accept a motion on the March 2nd, 2016 regular meeting minutes.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Wow, seeing none. Mr. Administrator of the vote.
Counsel Burns.
Aye.
Counsel Pike.
Aye.
Counsel Thompson.
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein.
Aye.
Counsel Levy.
Aye.
Counsel Nizaro.
Aye.
Motion passes seven, six, five, zero to one.
Uh, report of the town administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First item in my report is I presented to the council the 2016-17 town council schedule. One thing that we did last year is that we allowed people to have, we only met once in July and August, to allow for vacations. Uh, I did put those in there as tentative, as what dates they could be. For example, I said probably wouldn't want to meet two days after the Fourth of July as that's traditionally a vacation week for people. And the other one would be the first week in August. If something came up, we could meet in an emergency session. Uh, the other would be the date of the budget workshop, which is on a Saturday, which would be October 22nd. That's usually the day we meet with all the department heads. We start around 8:30, 9:00 in the morning and go till about 2:00 in the afternoon. Those are just tradition. If there's any changes you'd like, that would be time to do it, if anything.
Tradition?
Tradition. The spring cleanup, this year's spring cleanup will be April 2nd, 6th, and 9th. Residents may bring items to the, to the transfer station. Residents are limited to, limited to one pickup load of bulky waste. Additional loads will require a coupon, which may be purchased using a check or money order at the transfer station. Brush leaves and scrap metals do not count as bulky waste and are not limited. The only residents eligible for curbside pickup are those who are disabled or handicapped or are senior citizens at least 62 years of age. Don't ask me why with that number, I'm not... Uh, these residents must call Public Works Office prior to the start date to be put on the list, uh, scheduled for pickup. Just an update on the fiscal year 16 operating budget. I've reviewed the operating budget and we are currently under-expended with 66% of the year complete. We're at 64% of the budget expended and revenues were right on target. I've asked the finance director to provide me with a report on estimating where the year end expenses, expenses will be. As of right now, we believe that we'll be tight, but this is also due, uh, this is due to some unbudgeted expenses. We are estimating higher than, than anticipated revenues. Departments are going to be monitoring expenses and try to limit unbudgeted projects for the remainder of the year. Uh, the other reason for that is that we're also budgeting tighter. We've been saying that for years, that, so you don't see that gap any longer. Before I get on to the Route, South Route 108 Bike Path Project, I want to give an update on the Eagles situation. As you, the council is aware, the judge in our eviction proceedings has granted the Eagles a 30 days to provide solid proof that there was something done wrong, procedurally wrong in the tax dealing process. We are confident that nothing was, uh, but they have the right to do, to try to prove this. However, the, during that time, the judge also lifted his previous prohibition to serve alcohol on the property during this process. So as the Eagles are open, serve and alcohol again, the judge did require that the Eagles put us on their insurance, which they have done so. So we are covered by their insurance. So we will know in 30 days with, with their filing on, um, what their grounds after the issue with the eviction. So that's where we are.
There's less than 30 days.
Yeah, it's probably like 25, yeah. The next item is I've, I've asked the town planner and Phil McDonald, the town's contract engineer, for the Route 108 Bike Path Project, um, here to answer any questions the council may have. We received the cost estimate for the project. As you know, there were some revisions that were going to come forward. We were approved for funding of the project of 100% by the federal government and the state of $809,000. The cost estimates for the remainder of the project are $1.2 million from Irving Gas to the town line. So we have, uh, two options. One, if the council would support a project up to the amount that the DOT and Federal Highway Administration has committed, so up to the 400, 809,000, which would allow the project to extend from Irving Gas Station south approximately 4,000 feet to Hershey Lane, or basically as far as the money will go. Or whether we'd support building it all for a cost of $1.2 million with the understanding that the town would provide a match of 20% above and beyond the 809,000. So what it is, is since it's $1.2 million total cost and we're already receiving 100% funding, uh, the difference is $391,000. The state share of that would be $312,800, with the town coming up with $78,200. We don't have that in the operating budget. Just, that's a large amount. The only areas that we could take that from is the municipal transportation fund, uh, which is that $5 fee that you pay when you register your vehicle, which currently has $174,682 in it, or the roadway improvement fund, which has $125,156 in it. We're just looking for guidance tonight because it's sort of, before we come to the council with the full proposal of approving it and going out to bid, we need to know, is the council willing to withdraw, at some point in time, withdraw those funds to offset that, that we would make a match? So I'm sort of just looking for a consensus from the council, not a full vote.
So I don't want to get, I guess, we have to get into full discussion if we're looking for a consensus.
Yeah.
Do people have questions on what the options are? They're in front of us, from Steve. Counsel Weinstein, let's see.
Can you talk a little bit more about those two funds? And I don't, I don't know that I know what the municipal transportation fund is.
When you register your vehicle, there's a $5 charge, charged that you pay. We take those funds and we put it into the municipal transportation fund. Those are restricted to either improving roads or other transportation projects in the community. We do use that for paving roads.
That's what we've been using to balance out the money.
Right.
And then what's, and the other, is that our road fund?
That is a capital reserve fund that was created last year to start putting money aside to do larger projects.
And what's the total amount in those two funds?
Uh, $174,682 in the municipal transportation fund and the roadway improvement is about $125,000. There's a little more for, because of interest.
Other questions or comments?
Well, are they going to make a, a presentation?
I, that's what I, I'm looking to see what, I mean, they're ready to answer questions the council may have. It's more of a, before we get to that next step, I need to know if you're willing to, are we willing to...
Consider.
...contribute town funds. That was one of the big things of the project, when we weren't contributing.
Counsel Pike?
Is it just, it's 4,000 feet if we stay within the current funds that, without contributing funds?
Correct.
How lo, how big is the distance if we, if we contribute the additional one?
$68,000.
Phil McDonald, underwood engineers. The, the total distance from the Irving down to the Rockingham Country Club, the driveways, that's the limits of the project. And then, once we did the, the estimate for the whole thing, it was, it was, um, it's about 6,850 feet from, from one end to the other. So it's, it's 4,000 with 100% funding, or 68, um, 6,850 feet.
So another 2,800 feet, something like that. So for 2,800 feet, it's going to end up costing us another 7,800.
It's like 75% more distance. It's more efficient that way, I guess, than one...
Huge amount extra.
Uh, Counsel Pike, do you have anything else? Counsel Levy?
Sir, I just wanted, because they're pretty short, I just want to go through the two options we were given. So one, we basically go from, for the 809,000 that they've approved. By the way, is that, is that a moving number? In other words, if we spent 2 million, would they still do 80% up to 2 million?
They do the 809,000, 100%, then that difference between...
No matter what it is.
2 million, they'll do 80%.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So we could basically go from Irving to Hershey Lane and that would use up the 800 at night, okay?
At no cost for the town.
And then if we go from essentially Hershey Lane to the town line, which is about...
Golf course, yeah.
Okay, well, it, okay. I thought it said the town line here somewhere. Did I misread it?
Uh, he said the town line.
Yeah, he must have said golf course.
Golf course. Missed.
Um, well, the cost estimates are 1.2 million from Irving Gas to the town line.
It's golf course.
Okay, fine. I just, what's in front of me? The second option is to go up to 1.2 million and that's going to get us that extra, I guess, is it 2,800 feet?
Correct.
Um, and then where would that additional money come from? Is that a combination of state and federal money, Steve, in conjunction with our 20%?
No, it's only state funding.
Okay, so the state would go up to essentially...
3,200.
300, uh, they'd spend another 312,000 and the town would spend 78,000.
Right.
And, um, so based on that, are there, are there any, and I'm assuming they've evaluated this, meaning the engineer, is there, is there any way to get us to the town line at the 809 by, um, changing any part of that bike path that, you know, at one point they were talking about squeezing in near the bridge and, you know, there were a lot of different, um, machinations and options that they...
There's a, there's a lot of history to this project. The initial application was filed by District 6, NHDOT, um, years ago, under Mike Burridge, 10, 10-plus years maybe. And they've been, um, pursuing, taking, having the project municipally managed by Newmarket because that's the, the way they do it nowadays. So they established the initial funding, um, years ago. And initially it was, I believe, from, um, the Irving all the way down through, um, New, into Newfields. Um, Newfields wasn't interested in, in, um, participating and over the years, you know, the money just doesn't go as far. So, um, the initial, the project, so the project limits was redefined when this, when this started, from the Irving to the Rockingham, um, golf course. And that, right now presently, that's the project limits and the state would be, to extend that, that would, that would be probably a revised application or at least a discussion with them, um, to extend the project. They will, they've indicated to us that they will, um, participate in the funding and at the level that Steve, Mr. Fornia's described with the, to the go-to-the-project limits, but they haven't indicated they'd go beyond that. And with the overpass going over the railroad, it, it does become quite, um, cost prohibitive because of the shoulders and the limited space up there and would likely recall, you know, you'd be getting into a bridge project as well. So I don't anticipate that they'd entertain going to the town line. The next step for us.
So wait, 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 wait.
Yeah, this is the thing.
Let me answer the question.
What, what he's asking is we...
Well, wait, I would, go back to what he just said, though. I hear you, Steve, but he just said they wouldn't entertain going to the town line?
Hold on.
Can I explain part of that?
It's two, there's two different, take the notion of town line, uh...
It's a golf course, not the town line.
The reason why that, the town line is another 100 yards because you got, it's the overpass.
(inaudible).
They're not going to do that because it's going to...
So it's really up to the, sort of up to the bridge area.
It's, it's 100 li, 100 yards.
Counsel Levy's question correctly wrong, Counsel Levy.
I want to know if they could cut...
Is there a different route you can take to make it go further for 809? Because we had the whole meeting where they went through the different routes, uh, going South Main, or excuse me, going down 108, Exeter Road. And there was like two different route options that were given. And I guess the question is, is the other route option, would if we had gone with that one cheaper? Is that what you're asking?
That's, that was what I was asking. And then the other part of what I was asking was, you know, since we're not going to the bridge, because at one point I thought they were talking about going to, you know, to the bridge or beyond the bridge, but since that's not going to happen, you know, fundamentally, are we really gaining that much going from Hershey Drive to the golf course for 312,000? Uh, well, they're paying 312, we're paying almost 80.
Yeah.
I mean, is there that much of a benefit to go, I mean, how long does it take to go from Hershey Lane on a bike path to the golf course? And is that really worth, in all honesty, almost $400,000?
And that's what we're looking for guidance from the council.
That's what they're asking us for.
Yeah.
Do you, we have a way, we could fund it by doing this. Is the, the council, though, was very specific in saying that they did not want town funds to be used. This was supposed to be 100% funded through the state and the federal proj, project. We're looking, we wanted to give the option to say we could get down to where the original scope was, but the town would have to contribute.
Okay, so there's nothing, there's nothing, to answer my initial question, there's nothing that, that in the, from an engineering standpoint that can be done to, to get us to the golf course at the 809 by cutting something else back that was originally, um, part of the plan?
No.
There's no tweaking or anything at all that could be done?
Yeah.
Okay.
We, we looked at two options and this was the most cost-effective option that we, that we moved forward with.
Okay.
The second option was, was to build some of the, the bike paths off the main road. But, you know, the, a lot of the slopes and, and ledge-out crops and property rights were prohibitive to doing that, so.
Okay.
It wasn't very cost-effective.
Thank you.
Um, I know Counsel Weinstein, your light's been on longer, but Counsel Burns and Thompson haven't spoken yet, so Counsel Burns?
Um, so I have a question regarding the funds. Um, I, I think overall, it really, it would be beneficial to go to the golf course. I think it would be utilized and everything. But I have a question about the funds. So if the town would need to put in the 78, too, and the two funds you're talking about, what does that mean for roads? Like, what are the negatives that, that means if we were to do that?
We don't, we don't pave as many roads.
You're taking money out of the roads.
Right.
I know, but I want everybody else to know.
Yeah. We are not, we would not be paving as many roads. We're withdrawing from those funds.
Right, okay.
Counsel Burns?
Yeah.
Thank you. Uh, Counsel Thompson?
I'm going to second what Amy said and I'm, I'm going to weigh in and say, I cannot support any spending by the town above the 809. This was put to a public vote that, um, was passed and the town said they would approve it, um, based on zero contribution by the town. And I think I have to respect that. Um, I think the bike path is a great idea, um, but I cannot support paying for that as much as it would get used at the expense of taking money out of the roads and the paving that more people will use. And I, I think, you know, I was going to say, I'm sorry to feel that way, but I'm not sorry to feel that way. I think that's what we need to do. We have been fighting tooth and nail to get these roads taken care of and I think we have to look at the bigger, the bigger picture here and what makes the most sense for the most people. So we will get some of a bike path ideally and I think that's great, but I can't support anything further. Thanks.
Thank you, Counsel, Counsel Weinstein.
So my light was on to say basically the same thing. I think that, um, it's unfortunate that we just went through town meeting because I would have absolutely supported a warrant article...
Yeah.
...to include those funds or, or, you know, to, to do something, um, to include that in our budget. But to take a third of our road money...
Right.
I can't...
And understand that we would have to have those figures back in August.
Right, no, I, no.
I just don't want anybody to think that.
Yeah, no.
If we knew three weeks ago, we would have been able to...
But a petition warrant article back in January, right? Like, no?
No. We don't, can't do it that way. That's not the form of government. It's not, it's not like the school where you can just, there's a different way you have to petition.
Oh.
Let's talk about the machinations of a petition another time.
Regardless, yeah. So anyway, I can't, I can't support that, um, taking that money out of our roadways.
Uh, I haven't voiced anything, but I will agree that taking any money away from the roads right now for a nice-to-have from a need-to-have makes zero sense. So, I mean, the bike path's great, 108, $9,000, not, not our money or just a piece of our money coming in there, otherwise.
And just to add, we really kind of worked hard to get the money into the road fund to fix the roads that we have in there, so it's really tough to...
Need versus, need versus want, and I'm sorry, but we will get some of a bike path, which is...
Right, no, I agree with that. I agree with that.
She's got the idea, so we're not going to, we're not, anyone really strongly...
Got it, Steve.
You got it, that's what I wanted to hear, so...
Can I, can I just ask one? I just want to know where, where we are going with this 809. Where is, where is this 809? What is it paying to go from where to where?
Irving to Hershey Lane.
From Irving Gas to Hers, Hershey Lane? Okay. So essentially, if you're a biker, just to play this out, um, they can go to Durham now or not? Yes, no?
No, Durham, Durham's holding, that, that project's being held up.
Well, that's why I'm asking, so, so...
That's a separate project.
I understand, but that was supposed, the, the theory behind this, and I'm sure I'm wrong, but correct me if I'm wrong, the, the theory behind this was, was at one point, I thought, to go from Durham to Exeter or to, you know, tie the whole thing together on a bike. Wasn't that the initial...
Two different, there's two different project theories.
They may, yeah, but wasn't that part of what people were looking to be able to accomplish or not?
I mean, ultimately, they want to make all roads bike-friendly by having lanes.
I'm wrong, but correct me if I'm wrong, the theory behind this was, was at one point, I thought, to go from Durham to Exeter or to, you know, tie the whole thing together on a bike. Wasn't that the initial-
Two different, there's two different project theories.
They may, yeah, but wasn't that part of what people were looking to be able to accomplish or not?
I mean, ultimately, they want to make all roads bike friendly by having lanes. This project came out about in two thousand and five, when the state District Six was saying, we want to widen it in that area because of this congestion.
Yeah.
The other part was came about, I want to say, four years ago, not even, and they said, we want to widen between Gasmain Alley and Durham in downtown Newmarket. That's not just for, that's bikes, but it's also for safety because it's a narrow road. So it's, it's, that's a two-part, where this one is purely for-
Purely bike.
Bike.
And has the Durham part, is that on hold now or has that been consummated?
No, they, we're still, they're still working forward with it, they're still work, they think they've got, finally got the permits. They're going to be doing work on our end shortly, but it's not going to be the complete project.
So when it's done, I, all I want to know, when you play the whole thing forward and it's done, will they be able to get essentially from Durham to Hershey Lane theoretically on a bike, or is that, okay?
Yeah.
You can go to Exeter on a bike now.
You can go to Exeter, right.
You can go anywhere, it's just there won't be a bike lane.
Yeah, well, I meant with a bike lane. Take, you know, you can take your life in your own hands if you want to go over the bridge, I suppose, so.
Any, thank you very much. Any other questions on the Town Administrator's report, going back to the stuff you briefed and all the department reports we have in here?
All right.
I had one.
Council Pike?
The department heads.
You can go first, Tony, I didn't realize, you're in.
Oh, that's okay, go ahead.
Everyone's searching for notes.
I just, I wanted to hear a little bit more about the the New Hampshire DES being concerned since the well, the blending into the McIntosh well, is there a specific reason for-
Flint, Michigan.
Yeah, but what, I mean, Flint, Michigan was a, was a very distant, I mean, other than every water system is getting more scrutiny because of Flint, Michigan, is there something about the water quality and from coming in from McIntosh that requires that level of increased testing costs?
As of net, no. It's made a lot of, it's exactly that, there's more scrutiny. The other issue is that there are some systems which are not, they're the connections to our system that are lead, so it's a private connection, because that's just the system that they had. So it's nothing coming through our system, it's from our system to their homes, there are homes that have lead, still using that for the transparent water. That's one of the things that we have to look at, and they'll have to replace those over time, but it's mainly just more scrutiny. Everybody's going through it right now. Maybe you, and you're actually, we're seeing it in the news nationwide, there's just more scrutiny on it.
Okay.
Senator Pike?
Well, the only other one, and I, I'm just, I may just have a memory thing here, but it's the total nitrogen, that thirty-six per milligrams per liter is the amount that was most in in his recent report on the page.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna ask you, where are we?
Forty-two. Is that the same number that has to get down to eight and then we expect it to get down to five? That is that number?
That's correct.
So that's, that's, it's worth reminding that it's quite a drop from thirty-six. If it goes to five, which is what is expected, that'll be, you know, a substantial drop.
Thank you, Council Pike. Council Wyssing?
So my question was also about the well, about the water, and I was curious how we currently do our testing. I don't know if you know that. Do we test the water out of people's taps? Is that what we're testing?
It's a mix. We do everything. We do it from the well, we do it from the system, we do it from, we ask people to listen to their homes. So, and we do have a, we have a lab on site, we have certified individuals, and if it's something they can't do, we send it off to certified labs.
Because I would imagine that that's important if the, if one of the issues is the-
Yeah.
Is the piping that comes off of our system.
We are looking at a way that we may have to go in and test homes, a number of homes, to see what the levels are.
And we currently do some of that now-
Correct.
According to that, and we'll just be bumping it up.
Yep.
Okay.
So, Council Wyssing?
Yeah.
Thank you. Council Levy?
It was regarding on page thirty-five, the paving, work on the RSMs paving plan.
Yep.
I was just gonna ask, is there a way that that can be done without having the kind of overtime we had last time when they did the, the area near the Elm Street? In other words, can that be theoretically, when they start this, can they keep it within the work week, do you think, Steve? So it's not, it doesn't drive overtime through the-
Yeah, we'll look at, when we do paving projects, that's what, we'll definitely look at the overtime, what we can do. The RSMs paving plan is the, the paving schedule that the university's working on with the Regional Planning Commission. So that's what that, that portion is, but we can absolutely, that was a, that was an issue with the paving project last year, and we'll definitely look at overtime.
Okay. I just had a couple of few, one, you just go, it's not that many. On page fifty-one, it talked about the Planning Board setting up a subcommittee, you know, to go over the EDC recommendations and whatnot. Do we have any kind of timeline as to when that may be done, and are they getting any input from John Connery, do you know?
I did not see last night's meeting, I don't know if there's any discussion on it.
I don't know if Diane has any input.
Nothing, no.
No, there hasn't been any discussion. The Planning Board is working on the future land use.
It'd be-
Excuse me.
We had a long meeting last night that ended at ten o'clock, but no, there was no discussion specifically on John Connery's recommendations, as well as the EDCs. The Planning Board is working on updating the future land use chapter of the master plan, and we will have a draft for the Planning Board by the end of this week. The folks at the Regional Planning Commission are assisting us with that, and the idea is that that chapter will provide the conceptual framework, if you will, for the zoning changes that are being recommended, and we're hoping that with the consensus of the Planning Board on that document, that we can move forward more specifically with the actual drafting of the zoning ordinances. Meanwhile, I've been doing some research and I've collected probably a dozen or so examples from different communities, not all in New Hampshire, but I'm putting together a matrix to do sort of an analysis to see what the design parameters are and the various approaches, and I'm getting that information together for the committee so we can meet probably at this point in May and start working on that, and hopefully get something soon to the town council, and I'm hoping that maybe by the end of June we'll have something and we can come forward with a presentation.
Okay. June would be great, because it's been-
This all depends on if I can get all the masses together to coordinate and, you know, get everybody on the same page, but that's what the goal is anyway at this point.
June, okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Let me just see, I got one on page eighty-five, I don't know if that falls.
This was just relevant to what that-
Okay, Council Pike, talk to that.
Yeah, just, just to say, and I think we've mentioned it before, that, that future land use chapter does have language that's relevant. I think that's why that, because the two subcommittees were almost designated at the same time, but a lot of, there was a lot of overlap in the members, and the Future Land Use Committee had language about the same topic. So we did the broader project first, and, and some of that is in there, and this would be what we're talking about, it's the more specific stuff.
It happens sometime within a year and a half of John finishing, it'd be nice.
Yeah.
Really.
Any other, any other questions for the Town Administrator? Seeing none. Committee reports.
Turn the heat up.
Tell you wanna kick us off the Planning Board, then you just started talking about-
No.
Like, every meeting, you start doing the Planning Board.
Well, it can't be quite as often, because there's only one of the Planning Board and two of the Town Council meeting, but there was one last night, as was mentioned. So I think the, we've already mentioned the Future Land Use Chapter. Other things that that came up last night, there was a discussion around is the, the Grape Street project, where people are familiar if they've been following it, that with the four units going in there, and they were seeking a, a, what's, waiver, I was, I was, not hit waiver. They were seeking a waiver because they wanted to have, something was very reasonable, to have a larger water discharge rather than individual places that were to take up the water, they wanted to have one single area that would do that, which would be better. It's fairly contentious, because, you know, there's a butter concerns about whether that project believed there, but that the Planning Board really is going to decide to seek, you know, if we have any ability to, to influence design standards for the building or that type of thing. So that's, that was what we ended up having, is what influence do we have on, on that project, if we can look at that. The other projects that were talked about, it was interesting, the, because it's come up before, the, down at the industrial park off Forbes Road, there's a change to that project coming along, you know, previously, they'd done the excavation off 108, and that was going to be a, an expand, you know, they were also talking about the, the building being expanded in there. Now that building is not going to be expanded as much, but they're also talking about subdividing in two additional buildings being put in there, subdividing that, so that there'll be three lots, two new buildings in that area, changes to the road. So this was just an early, sort of a courtesy, let us know it's coming, nothing was, you know, no application at that point, at that point last night. And there was also a subdivision on Grant Road that was approved, and that's it.
Any questions for Council Pike? Council Burns?
The Conservation Commission met last Thursday, so they had a discussion on the, about the kiosks that were damaged, they had a builder come in and talked about pricing and everything, so they're moving forward with that, and hopefully that will be, I think they said by the end of May or June, I think they gave them a deadline to have those done, so. And then there was also a representative there from the Lamprey River Advisory Committee that was talking about some footpath connector trails for, I want to say it was the Long Bay Road, maybe, I'm not really, I can't really remember where, but anyway, so it was for like canoe portages and that kind of thing, but I don't know.
Planner's saying yes.
Am I right?
They want to connect with the Heron Point property-
Right, okay.
Which is up a road.
Right, okay.
They want to connect with the Heron Point, spoke to Town Planner just said. We can, but the people at home probably can't.
Yeah, that would be great.
There was some input from the Local Rivers Advisory Committee-
Yeah.
And they're interested in seeing some kind of pedestrian connection between Bryant Rock, if you will, and Heron Point, and some kind of public access linkage so that people know that there's a conservation area across the river that is lovely-
Right.
And is accessible to the public and wants to be able to make a safe connection, because that section of Bay Road is rather dangerous, as I'm sure you can attest to Mr. Chairman, living in that area. So that was one of the recommendations that they came up with, which is a good one, and I think, you know, maybe we should talk about it when we do our CIP, and maybe there might be some opportunities there.
Right. Thank you. Right, so that was a big discussion, and then I haven't heard anything about turtle signs yet.
No turtle signs. It is time for turtles.
It means summer's coming when the turtle signs go out.
It's rapidly approaching.
Yeah.
Council Pike, give a question.
Just gonna add in a, sort of a part, because I heard this report on the conservation last night.
Yeah.
They also were talking about the portage, right? From above the, above the, above the bridge? That's what I understood they were talking about.
You mean the Elm Street?
That's already taken place, and then-
Go ahead.
Okay.
Should sit in the front row.
Okay, thank you. We also worked with the Local Rivers Advisory Committee last summer. The Planning Board was reviewing a property called the Kmart Properties Project, which involved the subdivision of four lots, a property adjacent to Lamprey River on the other side of Route 108, and as part of our discussions with the developer and negotiations and with some input from the Advisory Committee, we were able to secure a public portage easement, so that if people have their canoes and kayaks and they want to take out at that location, they will have the opportunity to do so. And the Advisory Committee also suggested at some point they might be able to make some funds available to us for design and construction, which they are able to tap money through the Wild and Scenic Rivers Program, so that's an opportunity, they want to work with the town, and they're very interested in collaborating with us on some of these projects.
So any questions for Council Burns? Or Diane?
Yeah. Good thing you were here.
Maybe Matt will answer one next. Any other committee reports? Seeing none, old business, resolutions in the second reading. I will accept a motion on resolution two thousand and fifteen sixteen dash thirty-five, amending the town personnel plan to include salary schedule.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion, is there a brief?
Just as we've discussed in the past, pursuant to the town charter, I have to present to the council an update, the pay classification of every town employee. This, we did a survey of light communities of size, population, net assessed valuation, market, and employees in these are what we're recommending for the minimum and maximum wages for an individual in those positions. I would like to reiterate, even though it's in the resolution, that this is not changing anyone's salaries. This is just, just setting a schedule, that if we were to fill a position, they would be, could be paid between X and Y. So it's just a, it's a schedule.
Oh, I'm sorry.
There, this is a common practice in municipalities, we review, review this every three years and make changes as need be, but the council, I need to present it to the council, and council can either adopt or not.
Questions? Council Levy?
When you said could, that's, a minute ago, you said the council could, do we have to? In other words, if the salary is between, I'm just making up a number, between fifteen and twenty dollars, right? And that's, and a while ago, I had asked, you know, if another town that we're looking at had a certain criteria, and that's when I used your example, and you just want me to use your example, but I was trying to leave it somewhat ambiguous, but if there was some requirement, whether it was an educational requirement or something in that area, and Newmarket didn't have to have that, for sake of making the point, would we be required, if we adopt this, to pay that person between the low and the high?
I think there's two different things here. One, the low, one, you should, you, we're not saying that this, I'll, Town Administrator's not in, but I'll say Town Administrator. Town Administrator in a town in the North Country is not the same skill set as a Town Administrator in the Seacoast, two different things. We didn't compare those because it's not the same community. We looked at, say, a Town Administrator who had similar duties across the board. So if you, if you had a town, if you had a Town Administrator that didn't have everything, you'd start him at the bottom. If he had everything, you'd try to find a place to, to fit them, and if they had even more, I would probably come in, even though I'm the person, come in and ask the council to waive the salary survey, and this is the reason why, and pay him above that.
So you, so you, now, now, if you waived it, can you waive it? Let's take finance for a second, and take, let's say, every, every town around us, their finance person was a CPA. There's a more, it's not, it's not a legitimate, but a-
And we didn't hire somebody with a CPA.
And we hired somebody without a CPA, because for whatever reason, we just did not require for our level of finances a CPA. And a lot of the towns, I know we had a litany of towns, but, you know, we are lumped in with towns that are significantly bigger than us, like Exeter and Portsmouth, and, or more affluent like Ry and Newcastle and whatnot. But that said, if we didn't hire that person with a CPA because we didn't need a CPA, would we be required to pay?
No.
Okay, so if we set a schedule, and that's my, the real question I have, if we set a schedule from between twenty and twenty-five dollars, or fifteen and twenty-five, and we hire someone who may be on the lower end educationally or something that we feel will do the job, but we don't need to go beyond that, could we pay, could we pay that person?
I would not, excuse me, no, I would not hire, I would not set their salary at that level. So if I had somebody, if the, if the job description says I needed, if the finance director is a CPA, and the individual is not a CPA, at that point in time, they would not be making the minimum. Unless, say, again, unless they had some other skill sets that we wanted, then I could do that. But this is a, this is a suggestion of-
So that's a guy, it's not an absolute?
Correct.
Okay.
It's, this is not a union contract. If it was a union contract, then it would be an absolute. This is not. This is a suggestion of what the position should be.
Okay, that was my real question, and so it's not an absolute?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Real quick, just for the record, in the brief, there were only six positions that were below minimum. Did we only adjust those six positions in there?
We have not adjusted any positions. Adjusting a position means we've increased their salaries.
No, I'm sorry. There's six positions in, that are in the salary, six different types of things that are inside the sal, inside the resolution, that were listed as currently were underneath. Now, when I say positions, I'm not saying people, I'm saying the ranges for those types of roles.
Those ranges were, every range-
Was every range changed, or just the six that were noted to be below?
No, no, okay. And I, I just want to make, I'm gonna walk through this, so everybody's clear on two different things. Yes, the ranges for those who are below, are starting above where they are. So yes, the, everybody else somewhere fits in there, and we're okay. The issue in, just so we don't have this confusion, I know you're not, you don't, you're not, we're not changing anybody's salary with adoption of this.
I know that.
So yes, there are still, six, six positions are being paid under what our salary schedule says.
So I, I guess the question is this, then, and it wasn't in the brief, what are, how are, which of our rate, wage ranges are out of whack? And which ones were adjusted and how much?
Those were those six positions are out of whack.
The six, those individuals right of whack?
The, we don't have, we don't, but prior to this, we've never had one.
Those six positions, those six, those six positions were out of whack.
Yes.
And that was it.
So we are just adjusting those positions in the range?
And we are setting schedules for everybody else, because currently, we did not have one.
And we're supposed to.
Correct.
All right.
Or we were okay on all the other ones other than those six.
Correct. We were in the, we were in the range.
We magically found a way without having one of these.
So is there, oh, may I ask you?
Yeah.
Is there a plan, Steve, in the near future to adjust those six positions, or are you going to leave them the way they are, or what's the plan?
My ultimate goal would be try to get them to the minimum. I have to look at what our operating budget can afford, because we did not budget for those changes.
Okay. Other questions?
Thank you.
Seeing on Mr. Minister of the.
Council Burns?
Aye.
Council Pike?
Aye.
Council Thompson?
Aye.
Council Weinstein?
Aye.
Council Levy?
Aye.
Council Nazaro?
Aye.
Motion passes six zero.
Resolutions ordinances in the third reading. I also have to motion on resolution 2015-16-34, authorizing the town administrator enter into a general services agreement with Underwood Engineers for General Engineering Services.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Do you have a brief for us?
I'll ask the finance director. The, I just want to go quickly with the process that we did. We solicited for proposals from engineering firms earlier this year. We received seven.
Sounds correct.
Seven. Of those, two of them qualified, met the standards that we needed. We brought those two in for interviews. And after interviewing them, we recommended, we looked at rates, we checked references, and we met numerous times to discuss the benefits of each firm. And at this point in time, the town is recommending entering into an agreement with Underwood Engineer for one year, as, to act as the town engineer. What a relationship this is similar to would be the town attorney. We have a, as we have a town attorney of record, we will have an engineer of record that we can run projects by and ask for a review of items. Much like the town attorney, if there are projects that are above and beyond what the firms can do, we will have to get special engineers. For example, the wastewater treatment plant, we would get a special engineer. For a town attorney, we get a spec, there's projects that you get special attorneys for. It, I just want to say, it was a very difficult decision. I think they're, they're both excellent firms. And, you know, we want to see how this works, and that's why I'm only recommending a one-year contract as well.
Anything to add?
No, actually, that was very good.
Questions? Council Levy?
I have just a couple. I read through the questions. I, I had had some questions, and I'm assuming people got a copy of them at least.
He did.
My understanding, as far as the rationale for hiring Underwood over Ty Bond was, forgetting the fact that they're competent firms, et cetera, was basically twofold. One was that there was a history with Underwood, and they had a history of the town, and consequently, they knew the town well, and it was sort of a seamless, you know what you've done here and what you've recommended. And so you have those documents, and I think in, one of the answers, you said they would share them with us at no extra charge, something to that extent. Matt, correct?
That's correct.
And, and then the other one was the fact that Ty Bond only had one municipal engineer, and Underwood had multiple municipal engineers. Those were, from my perspective, those were the two driving force, the main reasons for selecting them. And I, I, I'm assuming everybody got the letter Ty Bond sent to Phil. I'm sure he forwarded those to people.
He sent it to Steve. You sent it to everyone.
Everyone received, and they're.
So there's, there's only two things that sort of bother me. Number one, Underwood, you know, it had the contract forever, you know, in the past, for I don't know how many years. It certainly goes back before two thousand.
I don't know what you mean by that. We, we've only had individual contracts for specific projects. What we're trying to do here is something brand new. It would be as if we're hiring our own town engineer to be on staff.
Let me rephrase that. Underwood had done an inordinate amount of work for the town in the past. Since two thousand two, it was, you know, somewhere around two million dollars, I think, since, you know, from what you sent. And I think they, you know, were the primary go-to firm. Number one, you know, based on the information we got, Ty Bond has fourteen full-time certified engineers. There really isn't a definition for a municipal engineer. They're, they're a licensed engineer, and they work in municipalities all over the place, which they, which is in the letter they gave us. I don't have to read all the areas they work, but they have, in the letter, they said, we have fourteen full-time licensed professional engineers in Portsmouth, you know, essentially, all of whom can do this type of work. At the other meeting, we were told, they basically only had one. So I.
Can I clarify that?
Sure.
Okay. They only have one person who just does work for municipalities. They have to go and get work from outside offices. Yes, they do have other engineers in there that do civil engineering, but a lot of their civil engineering, they do for, for developers, not necessarily for municipal municipalities.
But that doesn't mean they can't do work for municipalities.
No, no, no. Go back and, and remember what, one of the points that Steve made, both firms are qualified, okay? That the point here is, where do we draw in some of the expertise? In, in some of the instances that we pulled out during our interview process, we'd have to draw in the expertise from other offices outside of the state.
I don't want to get into it, but that's just not true.
And the. The comparison is, again, I use the town attorney. Our firm, the town attorney that we use, their firm is not just a municipal firm. You know, there's no such thing as expertise in just municipal law. They're, they're attorneys. Same thing with engineers. They're not just engineers. They're, they're, they can do engineering, anything. However, they have areas where they have expertise, and that's municipal engineering. Same with John Ratigan, who's an expert in municipal law. So that's correct. If you have fourteen engineers in the Portsmouth office, one is an expert in municipal, is dedicated to municipal engineering. Other engineers who can do any, who have experience in municipalities, but are also doing work for other, other types of businesses. So that's the difference between, when they're saying municipal engineers, they have somebody who is dedicated, one individual in Portsmouth dedicated to the municipal engineering. One of the things that came up in the discussions was that the firm that we're recommending, Underwood, has stopped representing private entities because they were concerned about conflict, that they may have a developer in front of them who they may represent as engineer on one project then come represent the town on another. And they don't do that any longer. They're just working for municipalities. There are law firms that do that as well, that only represent municipalities. So no, and I understand what you're saying, Council, that there, it's not saying that there are experienced engineers throughout the firm of Ty and Bond. What we're saying is that that office, there was one, one individual who is dedicated to municipalities versus other firms, other projects. And that was what was explained to us during the interview process.
And I have to point out that one person is very well-respected amongst municipalities in New Hampshire.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm just going to leave it at the fact that I believe what you're arguing is, they may, they may now concentrate primarily on municipalities, but they have, you know, even if you look at the, in the packet, you know, they do stormwater. I don't know how many private companies are doing as much stormwater as maybe are, we're going to need, but I, I think their skill set is more than adequate. And it was implied that they basically had one guy, and they'd have to bring people in from other firms, and I just don't want to get into it, other than to say that's, I just don't believe that to be the case. As far as having information for the town that they won't charge us additional money for, we have paid one point nine million dollars over the last decade or so. That's our information. So if they, you know, any information that they have on the town, you know, records for the town and engineering they've done for us, that's our, you know, we, we have a right to that information. That's, we paid for it, as a side note. And the only other thing I'll say is, on page two of the questionnaire, it said, second paragraph, it said, "We recognize they only had, not to beat a dead horse, one municipal engineer, and they'd have to incur extra cost to bring them in from another part of their firm." I just don't think that's accurate. I don't think it's true. So that's all I've got to say on that subject for now. Council Pike?
Just a couple of things. I did, I did mention at planning board last night that this was, you know, when I gave a report on the town council for the planning board, I mentioned that we're looking at this. So Eric Bartram, who is an engineer, mentioned that he thought it was a good idea that we, that we move in that direction, where we had a, an official relationship with an engineering firm in that way. I think he said, and I, and I, I may have not, I'm not a hundred percent certain on this, but this is sort of just intro. I think he said, you know, sometimes it can save money. So I'm, do we think we will, it will just be a, a relationship that gives us better information, better engineering services, or do we feel this will also save us money? And I, I did note, and it wasn't emphasized very much, but of the, you know, half dozen categories, in about four cases, you were able to see a price comparison between Ty Bond and Underwood. In most of the cases, Underwood was, on average, a bit cheaper. So is, is, is that a real savings, do we think? Or is, is that, did we look at hourly rates at all as being important? And, and I think in your introduction, it didn't say anything about, it said, I mean, it said that you did not seek to have some kind of reduced rate for, for essentially making that, them the engineering firm. And I, that wasn't explored, and I question whether, should it be explored in, in exchange for the fact that we are committing to, that all of our business will go there? Is, is that something that we could ask about? That's a long rambling question, but that's, that's sort of where I'm getting at on all of that.
There's two parts. The first is, is it going to save money? We don't know, we know it will be more efficient, as in we'll have projects reviewed and engineered correctly, correctly, not saying they weren't, and make sure those are done efficiently. We've never done this, so we're, we're going to be seeing that the first year. We have all these different pots of money for engineering services. The question is, does all those, all the monies that are used for engineering ser, engineer services actually go to engineering services? Or do they go to other consultants? This way, we'll know, yes, we're going to be using all these engineers. As for reduced rate, what they're doing, when they bid on this and they propose our rate, they do it a slightly reduced rate from their hourly because they want to become the, the engineers of record. You don't go back and ask them, well, can you do it lower? Because that's what their bids are. And if you do, for one, you have to, you have to reopen the bidding.
Okay, I don't think I had heard before that this was a, a bid rate that was lower than usual. So that, that is something new that I didn't understand.
I want to kind of quickly jump in about the rates. When you look at the core group of employees that actually do a lot of the engineering work, those rates are identical between the two firms. It's where you get into, like, CAD engineering. I don't have it in front of me, so I'm just, and then administration, that, that, that's where the differential is. And I just want to give one example where we would have an engineer. I'm going to bring before the town council a proposal to strip off some of the siding off of the police department and the rec center. And when we actually have a contractor out there, I want, I might bring in an engineer to look at the sills of the building to make sure that they are actually sound. And the contractor might say something that's different. So in that case, it would save us money.
Is there any, Council Pike? Other questions? I have a couple.
Yep.
I'm still not convinced it's necessary. I, I just, so I haven't, so I, I recognize that there's a reduction, but I feel like we've done business with, like, say, Underwood before, since that's the one that we're seeing here. What is the reduction from the work that they priced for us before to here?
It depends on the project.
I mean, but they have, like, they have skill sets, right? So they have the list of, like, what a senior project manager makes, what a project manager makes, all the way down to administrative assistant. So I'm sure we could look at two RFP, or two proposals, and say, this is the price structure they're proposing when they were just the one-off, and this is the price structure we're proposing now. Correct?
Yeah, but I think in the example I gave you with the siding, I, I don't have enough time to do an RFP to bring in a structural engineer.
I'm saying the last time. We're using Underwood right now for something else. We're, literally, they were just in this room. So I know that there is somewhere there exists a piece of paper that listed out how much that they're asking per wage wage, wage range, position.
Rate.
You know what I'm saying? Wage rate for the positions versus what they're proposing here.
Yeah.
And we don't have that in front of us. So I literally don't even know what the savings is.
No, what he's asking is, for example, Mr. McDonald was like, what is the hourly wage, wait, rate we're paying him now? What's the difference?
How much did you make to sit in here now versus how much you make to sit in here if this gets passed?
I can't answer that.
I feel like it's a very fundamental question for me to be able to analyze this. Like whether or not we're getting what we need. So that's my issue with whether or not we need it. My second issue is the process around how they were questioned, and probably sick of me saying the word rubric. But I like, when I, like, to me, I would like to see standard set of questions, like the answers that were given to Council Levy's questions, where it was, that it was more free-flowing, which is fine, but if there's not standard set of questions being asked of each, and then judged against a set of criteria, then I just feel like it's less quantifiable as to why one firm was chosen over the other. I'd like, I'd like to see some level of quantifiable, like this one of this.
And I understand that, but one of the problems when you do, if you, you go that route, sometimes you don't, if you don't get questions answered that you may have that come up.
You can have the, I'm, I'm not saying that you don't need to have, like, follow-on, it should be robotic, but there should be a core set of questions that you're asking everyone you're interviewing, so that you've got the core set of answers to compare apples to apples, not apples to oranges.
And you do, I mean, that's sort of what the RFP process is. Here are the core things that we need answered. They bring us their RFPs, and they answer them in writing, and then you follow up with questions from there, and especially, they give you a presentation on their RFPs. So that's what you have in there. But that's fine, yeah, I see what you're saying. But yeah.
And I guess the only other question, issue I have with process is that not everyone, the same people were not part of the interview of both.
One individual was not due to an emergency.
And it's totally because something was going on. But, but I do feel like it should have been, again, apples to apples, the same individual seeing both, so they've got all perspectives, especially because that's a pretty important department's perspective.
I'd like to jump in on that one point. There were two individuals that were not at, at one of those meetings. The firm not selected actually invited in one of those individuals, but not the second one.
So regardless of what happened or how it happened, I would like the same people being in there.
And I understand, but if we, if they didn't, I couldn't control the, the emergency situation.
I get that, but then, okay. Counselor Thompson, thank you. Thank you, Matt.
I suppose where I'm stuck is that it's overall cost and need, and I think it piggybacks on what Chairman Nazaro says. When we hired the town attorney, it's for a yearly amount. He's on retainer for X number of dollars.
Correct.
Is that what we're doing here, that we have an engineer for X number of dollars?
No, and it's actually very rare that municipalities hire town attorneys on retainer for X number of dollars. If, one of the things we wanted to look at is if we see this, that we're continuing to use the engineer, then I would definitely suggest that we do it on a retainer basis. Because if, the previous attorneys that we had, right, they were on hourly, hourly basis, and we were going well over the budget. We don't know where we are yet, how much we need to budget. So that's our, that's our problem there.
I guess, I guess that's my, my thought, is that going back over the last ten years and one point nine million, if we divide that by ten.
I just want to clarify, there are two large projects that are part of that one point nine.
Understood.
There's the downtown, the wastewater plant up to the construction. And those projects would not be probably part of the engineering services that we do through this position.
I under, yeah, I understand that. So I, I think that I would overall be more comfortable if it was a yearly amount, to exclude things like wastewater, you know, again, the same as we have an attorney, who, look, if we, if we get a major lawsuit or something like that, obvious, you know, there, there would be extra charges incurred for that. I really think I'd be more comfortable if the town engineer was set up the same way.
Is that all, Counselor?
Yes.
Counselor Weinstein, because she hasn't spoken yet.
I agree. I think it would be ideal to have someone on retainer, but I think that for.
for this year, it makes sense. My question is, and we have engineering in the, you know, different budgets, it's a line item, so, and we don't expect, I mean, we're not going to overspend that line item regardless. So, we are restrained to, to a, to a dollar amount to our, our current budget, right? So, we're not-
Correct.
We don't have unlimited funds that we're going to be spending on engineering.
Or if they went over it, it's fungible with other parts of, you know, if the stormwater turns out to be more than they thought.
Right.
I mean, I can see a situation where it's really easy to pick up the phone and all of a sudden call engineer for the siding, where maybe we wouldn't have done that in the past. And I can see that we could pretty easily run up our, our budget if we're not careful, but, I mean, I, I trust that you guys are on top of that and have been, and I don't really foresee an issue.
Much like when the attorneys were hourly. The policy, if we entered into agreement, is they're gonna have to go through me before they contact them. And that's the same situation with the, the attorneys. They need to, we need to approve it before they ask a question, so we, we know what the budget's gonna be, and we're not gonna be going over. And we're not asking them, and we don't need to engineer the replacement of a lightbulb. That's, we'll definitely be doing that. We need to have certain level of services there. And that's why we don't know yet for retainer. I don't want to say, sign an agreement that we're gonna pay $20,000 a year, but actually we were only needed to spend $10,000 a year by having somebody on retainer, we just didn't use them. I need to know more about what we're actually using for services. So, that's, that's why the first year, I need to get some history to see what we're doing for the hourly. Because like with the attorney, we knew we were spending X amount on a town attorney for the hourly rates. And then we knew when they came in for retainer proposal, it was better to go with the retainer versus hourly because it was lower than what we were currently paying. We don't have that comparison yet. Because we're not using engineer on all the projects we should be, and we're not using, we don't, just don't have that history yet.
Counselor Weinstein? Are you thinking of a follow-up? I can't, yeah. All right, Counsel Levy.
I just want to be clear. I don't have an issue with hiring a, a firm under a contract arrangement like this. My issue is, you know, you know, to Phil's point about process, you know, who, who participated and was there a grading system or notes? I'm just, it's very short. Participants were basically Steve, Matt, Rick, Sean, Diane, and Mike Klaftman. And Rick and Sean weren't at the Ty Bond presentation because of an emergency, and then they ultimately reached out and they met with Sean. The grading system was general discussions between interview committee and ultimately where the finance director polled the interview committee. It was very competitive and close. So, you know, I don't know, you know, if all the same questions were asked, but at the end of the day, the two main reasons I have heard that we are hiring the firm is they know, they know the town, they've worked for the town in the past, and, you know, we can, you know, have our records and whatnot. If that's the case, then we don't need to put on an RFP. And, and, you know, normally, I'm not this frank in a meeting, but at this point, I'm going to be. Underwood has, for years, done the majority of work for the town for engineering. It was just sort of a known entity that the engineering would kind of always go that direction. And I'm not judging the work they've done for the town, meaning, not saying it's bad, good, or indifferent. I'm sure they've done good work for the town. But the fact of the matter is, if we're gonna choose someone who's done work for the town because they know the town, then we don't have to waste five firms putting out an RFP. And I think long-term, you know, it, it will have companies just say, they're gonna go with such and such anyway, so why waste our time? And, you know, that's really my issue. It's more over process. My issue is not that we don't need it, because I think we do need it. I think we should have someone take a look at the engineering when we do the Bennett Way area for the, for the flow of water and whatnot, and I certainly think we're gonna need something for stormwater. I just don't like the process, and it seems like, you know, we chose someone based on the fact that they know the town, and, you know, clearly, there's more than one person who can handle municipal work at the other firm. And I'm not pitching for Ty Bond or anybody else. I would be saying the same thing if it was, you know, Brand X. I just think it's sort of like a business as usual, so I'll leave it at that.
Counsel Pike?
I just, I'd point out that in a way, there's two questions being voted on, and we're trying to vote on them at the same time. Because one is, do we want to have an engineer of record? And the second one is, do we agree with the selection process? And I guess we're, we're kind of stuck doing those as one process, but it makes it a little more complex or a bigger challenge in terms of making a vote. Second thing I would ask is, let us say, because I like the idea, and I agree that it's good to sort of, I like the data gathering and evaluative part of this, that we're gonna look at how we use engineers, that we're gonna look at what we spend on engineers, we're gonna look at the utility. I mean, I think that's good to really have a year of analysis while you look at this. I think the question would be, at the end of the year, if, if it's apparent this is a good thing, that we, we find the process works well and the town's efficiency has increased and we, we're not overspending the budget and all that thing, would you then imagine going back and maybe looking at the, you know, the two firms you, you, that you liked and said, we're gonna continue with this, we like both of the way you work and did, and we would like to know what you would charge for X hours of work per year? Or something like that? Would that make sense?
Absolutely. That's why we're only doing a one-year deal. If we find that, if we find that it's working, then yes, and RFP will be reissued at the end of the year. And the firms who put in understand that, that it's a one-year deal, because we're, we're trying to get at our feet what exactly we're looking for when it comes to this. And the other part is, we'll have, we'll be probably pushing, saying, we want it on a retainer basis after this because of the fact, we know what we're expending, we want you on, basically to be on staff, to be on call, and we'll, and we'll reissue the RFP at the end of the year.
Any other comments? So, I, I don't disagree, I don't agree that I think it's a good idea to have an engineer of record. I literally have not been, I just don't see the data to show one way or the other for me right now. So, without the data, I'm kind of hard-pressed to support something. I agree that Bennett Way and the MS4 is gonna require an engineer. I also think that we can do what we have been doing and have a contract that goes out, so we can approve that as a council. This sort of removes the council from a bunch of stuff. I mean, like, there's a whole bunch of stuff that we've actually had a voice in that would then go away, because it would all go through you, right? Until it hits a certain dollar amount.
If it's general, if it's general engineering, yes. If it's not, I mean, you, like, for example, Bennett Way, the council would still vote on that, but we'd have the engineering done prior to the vote, because we'd be able to work with the engineering firm instead of saying-
It's supposed to us voting on who we're gonna contract with.
Exactly. Maybe, well, we do it in-house.
So, it's gonna give us a whole bunch of extra staff time. What are we gonna do with all that time?
That's, hopefully, we could have the project's time. So, this will be, for example, I mean, the, this came about specifically because, one of the things was because of the Bennett Way project, that there was questions about the engineering. We didn't, we didn't go to engineer for that. I said, we should have somebody on record that before it goes to the council, it was engineered. And that's why we're doing it, much like the town attorney. If I have a question, we have a proposal before the council, I go to the town attorney before I go to the council, and I have an opinion for the council. So, you have the right information in front of you to make a decision. Same thing will be here.
So, when you come to us, you'll have many of the questions that we would normally ask already answered.
Right, we'll have a review, and they'll say, here's our comments, this is what we recommend, and the council could help make the decision. And if it's something that, I know there'll be even more questions, I'd have the individual sitting in the room like we do the attorney.
So, given that, I still think the process was, was necessarily run well, so I just, I just don't think I can support it based on that. I'm not saying I could be convinced that we require an engineer, this is just my personal opinion, again, but I can't be convinced that the process was as tight as I think it should be when selecting someone like this. Any other comments? Mr. Minister of the Vote?
Counsel Burns?
Aye.
Counsel Pike?
Aye.
Counsel Thompson?
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein?
Aye.
Counsel Levy?
Nay.
Counsel Nazaro?
Nay.
Motion passes four-two.
I will accept a motion, thank you, Matt, to nominate Wayne Rosa to the ZBA for a term to expire 2019.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Seeing the Mr. Minister of the Vote.
Counsel Burns?
Aye.
Counsel Pike?
Aye.
Counsel Thompson?
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein?
Aye.
Counsel Levy?
Aye.
Counsel Nazaro?
Aye.
Motion passes six-zero.
Welcome back to the ZBA, Wayne. I will accept a motion for Mike Provost for a three-year term to the cemetery trustees.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Seeing the Mr. Minister of the Vote.
Counsel Burns?
Aye.
Counsel Pike?
Aye.
Counsel Thompson?
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein?
Aye.
Counsel Levy?
Aye.
Counsel Nazaro?
Aye.
Motion passes six-zero.
Welcome back to the cemeteries, welcome Provost. Resolutions in the first reading. Resolution 2015-16-36, resolution related, relating to the purchase of a 2016 Ford F-550 one-ton dump truck. Not just a dump. Whereas the highway department needs to replace its 2002 Ford F-450 truck, and whereas the department obtained a quote for a 2016 Ford F-550 one-ton dump truck, under the state's procurement contract as follows. Hillsboro Ford, $44,492. HP Fairfield LLC, $27,875, for a total cost of $72,367. Whereas the Public Works Capital Reserve Fund has a balance of $486,605 as of January 31, 2015. Now therefore be it resolved, the Newmarket Town Council does hereby authorize the town administrator to purchase a 2016 Ford F-550 one-ton dump truck and enter into any related contracts-
It's different. The dump is different.
Into any contracts for a price not to exceed $72,367. First reading, March 16, 2016.
That's a dump. That's a truck.
We look forward to hearing the difference next time.
Yeah, the dump and truck.
Resolution 2015-16-37, resolution relating to the purchase of 2016 Ford F-550 4x4 type-one ambulance, whereas the fire department needs to replace its 2006 Ford F-450 type-one ambulance, and whereas the department obtained a quote for a 2016 Ford F-550 4x4 type-one ambulance from three vendors, and the radios from the state's procurement contract as follows. Vendors are PVC, a professional vehicle corporation, not including trade-in, for $188,777. Motorola Solutions for $9,425, and Motorola Solutions for $4,548, for a total cost of $202,750. Whereas the ambulance revolving fund has a balance of $226,365 as of February 29, 2016. Now therefore be it resolved, the Newmarket Town Council does hereby authorize the town administrator to purchase a 2016 Ford F-450 type-one ambulance and related radios, and enter into, into any related contracts for a price not to exceed $202,750. First reading, March 16, 2016. Closing comments or correspondence, town councillors.
Do we have one more?
One more.
Oh, geez. Perhaps a bit of wishful thinking there. Hold on here. Thanks for keeping me honest. Resolution 2015-16-38, resolution relating to the lease purchase of 24 Scott Air Packs, whereas the fire, fire department uses self-contained breathing apparatus, respirators that protect firefighters from entering oxygen-deficient or toxic atmosphere, and whereas the existing SCBA respirators are at the end of life and can no longer be pressurized after May 2017, and whereas the fire department has obtained a quote of $213,940 for 24 Scott Air Pack 75s from Industrial Protection Services, and whereas the most advantageous lease financing of the equipment is through tax-exempt leasing corp for a term of five years, 2.79% interest rate, and an annual lease payment of $46,435.03. And whereas the fire department capital reserve fund has a balance of $328,094 as of January 31, 2016. Now, now therefore be it resolved, the Newmarket Town Council does hereby authorize the town administrator to purchase 24 Scott Air Pack 75s and enter into a lease agreement with tax-exempt leasing corp and enter into any related contracts. First reading, March 16, 2016. Now I'm done. Any closing comments or correspondence, town councillors? I'll say closing comment from the Veterans Committee. The annual fundraiser golf tournament is May 14 at The Rock. There's a registration right on the front page. Thank you, town administrator, of the town webpage. Anyone that is willing to play golf, wants to volunteer, or wants to sponsor a hole, or has a business that wants to give gift certificates for the raffles, certainly highly encouraged and appreciate it.
Do you have a Facebook page or anything like that?
There is not, but we, look at you. Facebook page.
Tsk, tsk, tsk.
I know.
Facebook.
Omega, no. Next council meeting is April 6, 2016. Seeing other comments, I'll accept the motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
We are adjourned, 8:37. Thank you, Counsel.
Gary?